Good evening, welcome to the September 12, 2018 regular meeting of the Milton Village Selectment. We begin by calling the meeting to order, we're going to go right to item two, which is a review and approval of minutes. And I just have minutes here for the August 31st, 2018 emergency meeting regarding the Ulin Rank contract. Any questions? Any questions on those minutes? Hearing no concerns, could I have a motion on those minutes?
I'll move to approve the August 31st, 2018 emergency meeting regarding Ulin Rank contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, confirming future meeting dates. This board will meet again on Wednesday, September 26th, October 10th, and Wednesday, October 24th. The only thing I want to add right here is that on the 9/24, which is, is that two weeks? Is that two weeks?
It's a week from Monday.
A week from Monday, so a week from Monday on 9/24, here at the Council on Aging, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is bringing in the Metropolitan Planning Council to present a detailed overview of the proposed overlay district for the Milton Village historic, new overlay district. Am I saying this right?
Yeah, it's just a build-out analysis.
The build-out analysis, okay, so the build-out analysis for Milton Village and the work that the NPAC has done there, a great deal of work over the past couple of years. So if any of the members are going to attend this, if we could just let Jennifer know so we can have her post on that night, because I think several members want to go, so I just want to make note of that one. Item four, citizen speak, do we have anyone here for citizen speak tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to move right to item five, I'm going to invite our Chair of the Fire Building Committee, Brian Walsh, to join us at the table to discuss all the great work they've been doing and moving forward. Just for everyone who's watching at home, Mr. Farrington will be a little late tonight, he's tied up on a business proposition that he's working on, and he was delayed and he'll be here shortly, he'll be joining us.
And Mr. Chairman, before we start, can I just ask Mr. Walsh, whom I didn't get a chance to call today, is this a general update or is this, because I have a recusal issue if we're getting into anything, we're getting to bonding.
I'm just going to do a general update as to where we are, progress and where we are.
It's not about a specific request for funding or anything like that?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right, thank you, I don't think I need to be recused then.
But listen, if you want to throw me a few dollars after the meeting.
Can I, just for your peace of mind, if you, if he is going to discuss anything about a potential, possible donation, would you be all right on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, just in case you go there, I just wanted to preempt this.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. The floor is yours, thank you very much, the floor is yours, Brian. So maybe you could update the members as to where we are as regard to headquarters, project and activity there. We have come so far on Atherton and the biggest hiccup for me, that I see for your committee going forward right now is, which is East Milton Station.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, great to see you all.
Good evening.
And really great to have the opportunity to come in and kind of give you an update. We've got a great committee, they've been working hard, I think we've accomplished a lot in the time that we've been working. So really on behalf of the, and I tried to use really big print so I could avoid doing this, but I want to be able to reference it correctly. On behalf of the fire station building committee, I did want to give you a quick update of just the progress so far, and I'm, you know, quite aware of the time and I won't take you too long. So it's our job to bring a plan forward to get approved and build new 21st century fire stations that will serve Milton for generations to come. Certainly the ones that we have, two of which have served over 100 years, would let you know that that's true. So we've had a very talented and experienced committee that have been leveraging their skills and in some cases their personal tools for a very effective analysis. At the very outset, what question was really sitting out there, and a lot of towns look at this as they go to undertake building new fire stations, can you do it with less than what you have, meaning number of buildings? And there were many towns that might have had three, looked at, and some of them did go down to two. Other towns consolidated fire stations as part of a whole public safety center where they put police and fire together and actually started a link DPW. So we felt it was very important at, to start, to determine whether we could provide timely and effective firefighting protection with two stations versus the current three. And make no mistake about it, the current three provide very effective response time for our residents. So it was key to understand that response time in fact is critical, it's one of the major factors when you look at this, and there are national standards that must be met. So our current three-station configuration worked very well, but we spent significant effort over many months on this alone. We discussed that during previous updates to the committee, we had, you know, I know that this committee we've been in front of in even a previous configuration of your committee, we had the opportunity to come in and we discussed it. We had not reached any conclusion at that point, but we first looked to see if we could use available space at the DPW yard facility as part of a two-station configuration. Because of where the space in our DP, because of where it's located, and it's important to meet response times, that, we quickly learned that that location would not work. You could not pair that location with any other site and provide adequate response time. Next, we leveraged some sophisticated modeling tools that member Dan Clark has, and ultimately we had him use the tools to tell us where would you locate two stations regardless of who owns the property or where the property is, to provide the most effective coverage with response times considering the street layouts, because that's, that's key to driving and getting to them. So the modeling tool showed us ironically that land extremely close to the Atherton Street Station, the current Atherton Street Station, and another open parcel of land at the corner of Brook and Center Streets, which was also extremely close, that open parcel really close to where it identified, that we quickly realized we should dig into this, could this work for a two-station solution? So the property at the Brook and Center is owned by the cemetery. We worked with the cemetery trustees, the conservation commission about possible wetlands issues at that site. And over a few months of looking into this, we did a lot of modeling on response time to existing addresses within the town. We took five years of actual data, actual calls that the Milton Fire Department has made to every one of those addresses, and we ran them through the model. Again, looking at leaving from now these two locations and where, you know, where would you provide them? It appeared to us to be very close, that that configuration was very close to meeting the guidelines. Guidelines, by the way, simply put, are 95% of all of your, yeah, 95% of all of your calls have to be four minutes or less. The three-station configuration today absolutely meets that guideline. So we thought it was close enough that we sought out and hired a firm with great expertise at this to do their own analysis and modeling and provide us with the results. They did an excellent job, and I can't tell you how many pages of graphs and maps we have from that. They alerted us to the fact, they alerted us to several things they hadn't really thought about as you deep dive into anything, and they had the expertise. So the first thing, they alerted us to the fact that we would now be locating our ladder truck, our only ladder truck, in the Milton Fire Department, away from the center of town with this two-station configuration, causing real delays if we had to get that equipment to the western edges of town, currently occupied by important locations like Fuller Village, Curry College, and other large parcels of land which probably represent the only areas of real development, or certainly the opportunity for real development in town in Milton, we don't have a lot. So, and by the way, the ladder truck isn't just to get you high, it's the, the chief was great in educating me early on to think of the ladder truck as a toolbox, that in fact, all of the engines are toolboxes. The ladder truck is the largest toolbox, and it carries, in addition to the ladders, it carries sophisticated jaws of life and all kinds of other equipment that you need in certain situations. So again, the first thing they alerted us to, hey, you are now pushing that no longer at the center of town, and it's causing more of a problem over here. The second thing they did is they identified an actual 185 calls that were made by our department over the previous five years that now would no longer make it in under four minutes. So now putting those folks at risk of firefighters getting there, taking much longer to get there than they had previously. And this wasn't arbitrary or, you know, some fake analysis, this was 185 real calls. And then another alarming discovery, and I just think it's important that I take a few minutes to kind of share these things with you, another alarming discovery was the burn rate. And this is something referred to by a lot in the industry, it's how quickly a house, for example, will go off in fire, or more importantly, how much time does a resident have to get out of that fire safely? And there are a number of studies, in fact, I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to try to put a link for the town meeting members to see, as well as yourselves, a short 15-minute video which really, it does actual filming of side-by-side and shows you. And here's the issue, as little as seven, as little as 15 years ago, the burn rate that would allow you, any one of us, to get out of our homes safely was seven to eight minutes. Today, all the testing is showing, you can really only depend on three minutes to safely get out of that house. Now, it sounds strange, how could it change that dramatically? It's really a number of things. It's the burnable materials that are being put in homes today, it's the open floor plans, and I think if you all think about it, you'll realize that, everyone loves these open floor plans, that causes the circulation of the fire much more rapid than it would have in just homes that were built 30 and 40 years ago. And then lastly, the toxicity of some of the materials we use now in building. So again, as they start to burn, it's toxic, you have less time to safely stop, you know, avoid breathing that and getting out. So we put all those factors together, we knew that the two-station configuration was now putting us on edge, and in fact, the experts said, hey, you know what, you put a lot of homes in danger. You can't get that big fire truck to the western side of town in a rapid enough fashion. And when you factor in the burn rate, we really shouldn't be looking at increasing response times, that in fact, national standards probably over the not-too-distant future will look to reduce those response times. So we as a committee unanimously decided that it would not be appropriate for us to bring a two-station option to the town. Lot of work went behind that, I feel that we're in a position much stronger now than the town's been before to defend and articulate why two stations won't work. So that was a big step, I just wanted to share that with you. So now we're down to three stations. Well, it turns out that the three stations, the three locations of our stations today are pretty ideally located to provide the best response time and fire coverage, including if you only have one ladder truck, put it right in the middle of town, right, just coincidentally. And by the way, some of these stations were built when there was horses pulling carriages, so it isn't that they had all that data, but isn't it nice that it still works out to be the best three locations? All right, so that, that being said, Mr. Wells, with your permission, I'll just sort of, I'll start with the left, the west side of town to work east. Atherton Street, so as we started to look, and we have not done a deep dive, the fire study committee did in fact do a deep dive and drew up plans to build, to rebuild on the site of Atherton Street. We've looked at those, and we might make some changes to those to make it better based on what we learned, but the first thing that happened is we became aware of the property directly abutting Atherton Street was for sale. So we felt it was important for our committee to really take a hard look at, again, building stations, you know, for generations to come, would it be wise and should we recommend the town purchase that piece of land to build a new Atherton Street Station? We were hotly interested at first, and the more we looked at it, we realized that probably we, all we would be doing is trading off land behind the current station but owned by the town that's part of the parcel today, for land that's along the main road, and there's some advantages to that, but the cost to purchase that land, we thought, also armed with the knowledge that we believe the town is going to have to spend some money to help us solve the East Milton location, which I'm, which I'm going to get to. When we looked at that, it was, the amount of space was a trade-off, could we build a really effective and adequate station to last for generations on the current Atherton Street site? And the answer is yes. So we'll be working towards that goal on that site.
So I just have one question on that site.
The headquarter station.
Can I just ask one question going back to Atherton, and I wanted to ask this last night?
In fact, Chairman Wells, if anyone, I mean, it's probably best to interrupt me if you have any questions that go along.
Is that land part of the fire station's parcel now, or is it just, in other words, to secure it, to build a fire station there, is there anything we're going to have to do?
Well, the maps that we have show the Atherton Street lot that goes significantly behind, it is part of all one lot.
Okay, that's, that was my one question, all right, I'm good, continue.
All right. So moving on to headquarters, generally speaking, well-located, right in the middle of the town. And we feel that the fire space needs committee provided a design that would reuse existing space and build new facility, you know, build new, add sort of new to old. I guess we could, you could say that we did that pretty effectively at the Milton Public Library. I think we did that extremely effectively. I think it's one of the nicest buildings in town, but put that aside. That's what the fire study committee did. We think it's incumbent on us to really look and make the decision that's going to last. That station's been there 100 years, another 100 years. And so this, as you, I am sure, realize, is a really wide, open parcel of land directly abutting just to the side of the headquarter station. That land is more than adequate to build a headquarter fire station, and if we were to do so, among other things, we'd be freeing up a lot of space and buildings that the current fire station occupies. But there are a lot of other advantages, and we're, we currently have an owner's project manager engaged, and they're going to do an analysis of taking the program of requirements that was identified as part of the space needs for that headquarter station, and they're going to look at what, based on their experience, they've done a lot of other headquarter stations, what could be changed, what could be done differently, and would it be, what would the cost be to try to build a good one in that open land versus the cost of doing the remodeling and rebuild on the existing property? But I don't want to leave tonight without giving you a taste for why the new land, intuitively to most people, and it may be true or may not be true, we don't know yet, but intuitively you think, you know, building a fresh land, it's got to be less expensive than rehabbing an existing facility. We'll know that soon, we don't know the answer to that, okay? But here's things that are true, we would avoid a lot of costs, you have to run the fire department while you're building these new buildings. Atherton Street gives us the opportunity to construct, we would have to do it anyway, a newer building on the lot really behind the current one, and we would repurpose and use the existing rock building, right, that would be the general approach route. By taking that approach, we have not impacted the firefighting operation while that construction is going on, we can stay there on site in the existing Atherton Street building. The central station, if we were to build next to it, we'd, we'd get that same opportunity, and it's, it's really big. We don't know all the costs yet, but it's big. I mean, it's, it's expensive to temporarily try to run the facility and keep the equipment available and with the response time while you're trying to build on the same site versus building right next door. So that's one issue. The other issue is, we do want, everyone's recognized, the experts that we've dealt with, the fire chief, everyone's recognized that the most important need is to rebuild the headquarter site first. It houses the heart of all the communications, it's got the majority of the sophisticated equipment, it has the larger staff, it's most important to get that in place and working as you, that's not dealing with the others. Well, a second advantage of using that open space, you can do it a lot faster. Anyway, you could just build on a fresh base quicker than you can carry down a rebuilding and trying to do it while you're occupying the other space. And then lastly, I would tell you that without doing a deep dive, and we haven't done that, but we will, it's much better suited for fire engines to safely return to the headquarter station and safely exit the headquarter station. Today, you know, think of how long that fire station was built, Town Hall, this, the Town Hall building wasn't even located where it was, it was a little, well, it was located there, a little further out. The, there's a church, if I'm standing on Kent Nav looking at the Town Hall, the church that right now has a school in it. And the fire trucks today drive around Town Hall to get out to Kent Nav, to get to where they're going, when they need to get there fast. So it's a real impediment to come around that Town Hall, and also, by the way, let's watch out for, and I have no doubt they do, little children that might be coming in and out of that, that, that new school there, well, new, it's probably been there four or five years. So we haven't worked out the details, but I can assure you, the dynamics of getting fire trucks out of, if we were to put it in that parcel next to it, out to the major roads, we might even go out to, I'm drawing a mental blank.
Read still.
Thatcher.
Either one, either way, actually both ways.
Maybe even go out to Thatcher, not sure yet, right, directly, but I can guarantee you, the entrance and exit would be a lot safer and quicker if we were to do that. So I just wonder what your appetite for, we think there's some real advantages to potentially doing it that site. Well, we don't have, which always plays a big role, is the bottom line in costs. Now, I would also add, and there is a prospective donation that's, that's going to be offered to us to potentially build, if not all, a substantial part of, it's really, the conversation at this point is about all, a new headquarter station. And, you know, I have to tell you, I mean, as all of us work on behalf of the town, well, that would certainly be a fantastic opportunity for the town, and if it would take, doing it quickly and doing that open parcel of land, I personally, as a resident and taxpayer of town, think that's, that's certainly worth it. I can't share any more details with you, I will tell you, and the Chair and Mr. Dennehy are aware of it, I'm going to be meeting with Town Council to talk about the legal process for affecting that to happen, the appropriate process.
Well, could we, I have a question regarding that, could we speak to that for a minute now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that you're talking about the land that is a basketball court currently.
Right.
Is that, I believe that's under the control of the selectmen right now, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So obviously.
I didn't hear that, I apologize.
The parcel that you're talking about is under the control of the selectmen.
Okay.
I was asking that as a question, it's not that we've got that confirmed.
I had the same question, which is why I asked that question, I wasn't sure if Atherton was under our control or was actually part of the parcel of existing station four, I think it is part of that parcel, that's what.
It is part of that.
I was talking about Atherton, I was talking about headquarters.
Okay, so.
So obviously, the selectmen would have to decide whether we want to give up that lot for this purpose, and you've outlined a number of benefits. There's also been, the master plan had talked about kind of building on the idea of a Town Hall, pop-up parks and different, I can't remember the name, it was like a community center or village center almost at Town Hall, so there's, there's been talk about other uses for that property, we have the schools coming in later on tonight talking about space, so obviously there's going to have to be some kind of a balancing. And I'm wondering, is, are you looking just at that, or are you also considering the existing site at the headquarters? Because when, a couple years ago.
We are, we haven't moved out the existing site.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to price them both with the owner's project manager.
Okay, because at town meeting, I just want to remind everybody that a couple years ago, we had a lot of people who got up at town meeting and said, you know, preservation of the existing historic structure is important. Now, it could potentially be reused for some other purpose, but there were a number of voices who talked about reusing existing headquarters as the fire station, even from building onto it because of its, for historic preservation purposes.
Although, I would honestly, I would submit that the, the last addition that was done in the 70s to the headquarter fire station, they added the lodge, lodge two bays on the same side of the property they were talking about, that, that addition is not so historic.
Yes, it's not part of the initial historic.
And if you could, and, and, look, I'm trying to influence you, so make no mistake about it, I recognize what I'm doing here, if you could build a beautiful new fire station in that open lot and free up a substantial amount of money to the town, and then you have the space to easily tear down two not-sohistoric bays, which occupy a lot of, I mean, you could do a lot still with the remaining space, let alone repurposing the other parts of the existing building that are there.
So just for the, for your clarification, I talked about this a little bit on our last meeting, when I met with their committee last night, I specifically, and we have Dr. Dorni coming in later tonight, I've talked with Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek about this, is that in their, looking at this parcel of land, could they be diverse enough and broad enough in their look to be inclusive for potentially, you know, something by the schools, potentially something open that could be like a community, something like that, that we could have all of it there, not, and to look at, have their architects and their engineers look at it in a way, because I think this is one of the few last buildable, it's clearly one of the last buildable spots in the center of town, and they, and your committee was very, especially Mr. Clark, they were excellent in, in their response to that request last night, and I think, I think we have to do that. I think that's, I think that's a smart way for us to go.
But I think the way to do that is to make sure that we've got the right planning people involved, that's the planning board.
That's what I mean, absolutely.
The master plan implementation committee, I think are going to have to be brought into this sooner rather than later, if you are thinking about using a different parcel than the existing parcel, so that some broader planning for the whole area can be done. I just don't want us to lose sight of that.
Just a further caveat, as Mr. Walsh knows, tell me if I go wrong here, the donation is conditional on a brand-new station, not a rehab station.
That's, that's the interest the donor has right now.
That's the interest the donor has, yes.
Do we know the reason for that?
I don't.
I think, my, just in my listening.
I don't think speed is part of it.
I do too, I think that, I think that the donor has done a little bit of homework and looked at the benefits to brand-new buildings in other communities, and I think he'd like this, that, they would like to see something like that in their own.
I think I'm comfortable articulating it this way, but the donor is anxious to do it quickly.
Yes.
I don't know what the reasons are, in a sense is, can build quicker on a fresh parcel of land.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, I just, I knew you were going to ask that question, I brought it up, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Just two quick things, Brian, so the parcel we're talking about, is the parcel directly across from this building, the Council on Aging?
That's correct.
Or behind, yeah, in front or behind, yeah. And then the second question is, would the new building require a basement, would you have to dig down into the, into the lot?
So we haven't got to that detail, but I think if you look at the current fire stations, the, you know, the bays that are, that were out in the 70s, there's, there's no basement behind those bays. So I don't, I don't know the real answer because we haven't got that to the design point. I'd have to look at the design of the rebuild to see if, I doubt there was any more potential digging, I don't think there, I guess there is part of it that has a basement, part of that structure. So I guess I don't know, I don't think that would have to be a requirement if there were some issues for that, but I don't know, we haven't gone that far.
Okay.
Are you going to rent it for something?
No, it's just sometimes when you dig, it creates issues.
Right, it creates, I get that.
And based on what was there in the past.
Sure.
That's a concern.
Okay. If you can continue, please.
Okay, so, headquarters.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, while we're on this subject, can you give us a ballpark as to what the, the amount of that?
Before you came in, he'll, he doesn't have that yet, but he'll be called, it'll be soon.
I'm, I'm reluctant to talk about pricing here.
Sure.
Because we're going to, we hope to be going to a town meeting in the not-too-distant future with some real costs. I'm reluctant to talk about pricing here.
Sure.
Because we're going to, we hope to be going to a town meeting in the not-too-distant future with some real costs.
Just to clarify.
And I don't want to lowball it.
Right.
Or set too high, you know, highball it right now.
To clarify, my question was, can you give us an idea of the amount of the potential private donation?
Okay, that, so I think there's a sense of building fresh, and we don't know the answer, because we're asking that our owner's project manager to give us that. But I think there's a sense around six to eight million.
Okay.
My guess is it's to the upper side of a gift, building fresh on an open lot.
Minus two, I guess on the up one.
I mean, it's real money.
Sure, 100%.
And it would, it would bring down the cost of the overall project, obviously, right, to that extent, which would be, which would be pretty attractive. Okay, so moving along, there's a sense of the headquarters. Let's talk about East Milton. So our committee has done two separate deep dive activities. We set up a subcommittee, did a lot of work on this, and looked at, is there any way we can rebuild and make a 21st century on the existing footprint in East Milton? Recognizing that we would have to temporarily locate them somewhere, and we hadn't solved that issue. But is there any way to do it on-site? The answer is no. With all the restrictions, requirements, and needs, and by the way, things have changed so much. You know, the life safety issues to protect firefighters from all the hazardous materials, the exhaust from the trucks and all, have presented a whole different set of building requirements. American with Disabilities Act has legitimate requirements for access to buildings. So the parcel is so small, the answer to that is, can we rebuild on-site is no. And we have a couple-page report, it's up on our website. Happy to provide that to you if you'd like to see it. So the next logical question, we concluded that, and then we said, you know what? Let's look at the abutting properties and what would be a potential opportunity, right? With a realistic view. So one realistic view says, you know, if you look at, if you're standing at East Milton Fire Station, and you're looking out into the intersection, the building to the right where there's currently an occupied business that sandwiches pizzas, that sort of thing, we understand there's some potential, what's the word to say this? It's an old building, there's some potential architectural concerns to save in that building. But you also have a business that's operating, and we're in a town that hasn't got the best reputation for being friendly to business, while having a lot of space for business. So that did not look like a good parcel for us to think about going after. But on the other side, there was a parcel that went down and runs along Granite Avenue there. We took a high look at that, and because of the configuration, the design, and the total amount of space, we determined you can't do it there either. You just can't do it. We've got a lot of detail on that, and happy to provide it to you.
Excuse me, I have a question on that point, Brian. Is that because you can't, you can only back the trucks in, and you can't drive them through?
No, it's not, that's a good, that's a good point, but it's not just that. It's a long, narrow strip, and it's one-way on that side. And so, there's just a lot of challenges, I'm not remembering all off the top of my head, but we can provide that. We were hopeful that we could do it, I got to tell you. I mean, there's a real, we think in the community, there's a real interest to keep stations where they are, in the East Milton Station, recognize that. Okay, so, so we did those two analyses. And then, I also want to share with you, when the fire study building committee made their last presentation to town meeting, there was quite a lengthy discussion, and those that were there will easily remember it. They were recommending to use the existing Milton Art Center, which occupies the old East Milton branch. There was a lot of resistance at town meeting to that. And the folks, including the president and other offices of the Art Center, made the point loud and clear at town meeting, and subsequently, since I took on this role, have made it loud and clear to me. They felt that not another, other options weren't looked at first. And they, basically Joan Clifford said to me, what we would like you to do is to make sure you look at all other practical options before you just decide that that's a great spot for a fire station. We think that's the right thing to do, where there's enough resistance. And look, that's a very effective, I love driving around town and seeing the artwork that they put around and stuff, I mean, it makes it a richer community. So here's what we're doing. We, and I, I don't know if the chairman Wells are extended with you. We're going to solicit, drafting a letter to solicit to everyone that lives within the East Milton district, if you will. Are there any available parcels of land that people have currently control over? Maybe a business, maybe a house, maybe an empty lot, that they would consider selling to the town to be used as an East Milton fire station? So that letter has to be fine-tuned, approved by town council, and it would have to be sent out by you folks. Richard has indicated that you'd certainly be willing to do it. I think, by the way, other towns have used that approach, and it's been successful.
Which ones, Brian?
Oh, I'm afraid you're going to ask, I wish Dan Clark were in my pocket. I'll email it to you if you like. There are, there have been that have used it and have been successful, so. But again, you know, every town, there aren't many towns that are as congested as ours. In other words, towns have a lot more open land than we do.
Sure.
So we recognize that.
It's a no loss, you know, we have nothing to lose in doing it and everything to gain.
Right, oh yeah.
We have nothing to lose and everything to gain in doing it.
Exactly right, exactly right. And I think it's, I think it's the fair step. Again, if we reach a point where we don't have any other attractive options, I think it's important for everyone in East Milton to know that we exhausted all the possible options we could before we came on attractive options.
Sure.
All right, so that, in addition to that, we think has some possibility. By the way, that was, that was, thank you very much to Milton Times, that, a discussion about that was covered at one of our meetings, and a resident actually reached out to me to offer their property for sale. And so, I'm not so sure that the lot, I'm not at liberty, I don't want to discuss the resident and the address publicly, but I'm not so sure it's going to be big enough. But regardless, I said to the resident, look, I don't think it's fair for us to engage in a dialogue with you, since it was in the paper that we're going to provide it to everyone without getting out there for everyone. But then we would absolutely follow up with this individual to see. But very, very quick, very surprising. And oh, by the way, it's not located in a bad spot. It really surprised me, so, all right. I'd be identifying if I told you, which I don't think would be fair. Okay, second step is approaching the Cunningham Foundation for the potential acquisition of some of their property to be used for the East Milton Fire Station. I think, you know, for 30,000 feet, it's probably not the most attractive idea to them. I believe, and Chairman Wells and I are going to be meeting with them, fair to say?
Yep, next month.
October 16th. I believe we can make a credible case to them. And if it works out, it could be an attractive option to the town. It will be still geographically very close to the existing station, not be in the square. It would actually be better suited, when you look at the entire district that the East Milton Station covers, more of it, a lot more of it is on the town hall side of the expressway than the other side, right? No surprise there when you think of it. And it would be located, I mean, the access, fire trucks coming out of that East Milton Station and trying to get back in. I mean, could there be a busier spot in town with traffic, both in the morning and the afternoon? Probably not, and I live close to a busy one. And I don't think that's going to get better over the decades to come, right? And so if we could get empty out onto a much larger street, which is, by the way, national fire standards recommend that, they actually give you guidelines about things like that. If we could empty out on a much larger street, you know, I'm confident it will be a very, very attractive solution. It might do things like, you know, have a public safety presence closer to two of the largest, the two large elementary schools in town, closer to Cunningham Park. It has a lot of potential. We're going to go that route, and we won't know until we try it. And you'll, you'll probably know it faster than I can tell you.
Just to follow up to that, is that their committee has, if that were to happen, if that could happen, their committee has done some great work at looking at the value of Engine Two, the commercial value of what that building is worth, which is some pretty good numbers, I heard.
Yeah, and thank you, Richard, because it escaped me, I do want to share it to you. So one of our members, Webb Collins.
If we were to sell it, if we were to decide to sell it.
Yeah. Has, you know, has a firm that has a lot of expertise. They did a very thorough analysis, again, it's something we could share with you, analyzing recent sales of properties, you know, Quincy, Milton, and came up and used, you know, it's a whole, it's like everything in life, there's a science to it. You know, when you're not involved in it, you think it's odd, but it's not. There's a science to it. And they're talking close to seven figures for that, that that property's worth is. Just that property, the East Milton Station. And I know, I know that even, I think on our first visit here, we mentioned, you know, if we were to find another suitable site, that freeing up that East Milton Station would provide some potential real revenue to the town. We now have a number kind of associated with that.
And that's a decision we'd have, if that were to happen, would have to, there'd be a decision that would come back before us, we'd have to think about it. But I was, he, Webb did a great job last night, just not only outlining what the dollar figures could be, but just the type of clients that would want to go to a site like that. Things that I would never even have thought of, and as he started to say it, I'm like, wow, they sure would. Like, just, it was just, I was, I was, I have been very impressed with all of that effort you've done, because in the long term, you've not only taken on the responsibility and the role of shaping firefighting services for the entire community for the next 50 to 100 years, but you've done it a way that, I mean, town meeting, who charged it, you know, has no idea, you've done it a way just fiscally and financially that this could in the end, with three brand-new fire stations, come out being significantly under budget from what the 25 million that has been expected.
Yeah, significantly, yeah.
Which you could only help other projects that we have on the horizon.
Exactly. One that's even earmarked by the early amendment, I don't know what we call that now, that's what I call it. Hey, there is one other item I do want to bring up. So a resident, who also holds a valuable position in town government, issued a request to me recently, and I, and I, and this is, I'm not, you know, I'm as legitimate as I can be here. I'm thrilled that it did, because it's one of those things that had not been brought to our attention, it could have been brought to our attention too late, and people thinking we didn't consider it. The resident asked, did we consider building on East Milton Fire Station on the existing deck? The deck over the expressway? And my immediate response was, it was our understanding that it was absolutely off limits. I know the town struggled for years to try to get parking spaces added to the deck. And subsequent to that, and it's only been a period of a week or more, even learning more and more, it's just probably not a practical opportunity.
Given everything else that surrounds the deck right now on this.
That's right, there's a lot going on. But even, even issues, you know, we haven't scratched the surface, but firefighters sleep in that building and sleeping over all that car exhaust, in addition to the fire truck that while they're sleeping is probably not running, you know, right underneath them. I'm going to guess that we would probably have some health, safety concerns raised before, even if it was an available parcel. But we will do more work on that, because there will be others that'll think the same thing. Especially if we reach a point where we say, we want to build an East Milton Fire Station, not where it is today. Someone will say, well, would you look at the deck? Absolutely.
Are you starting with structural concerns? Because I feel as if I've read a letter or a report stating that the deck hadn't been built for parking and would need considerable alteration.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot to that that would, it would need it. I, yeah, is it able to withstand a fire station on top of it? I have no idea, I'm going to guess no. You know, right, I mean, would they have spent a lot more money putting extra steel support in? I'm going to guess no, but I don't know the answer to that.
You've done a great job, and one of your committee members asked me last night, can we make the deck bigger? But Webb was very good on that, I mean, just on the dollar figures for that, he was really like, he was right off the top of his head on how much the cost, how big you have to build for air, you're talking about air rates, I mean, it was just, it would be astronomical.
Yeah, the engineering and building expertise on our committee is pretty extensive. It's really extensive. I mean, you know, one of the members built the Heinz Convention Center. Small project in the city of Boston. Another member was part of that as well, in a different capacity, but. So I know I've taken a lot of your time, happy to answer other questions.
Good, anybody else, anything? I also want to thank Lieutenant Chris Madden was there last night and spoke, and he gave a great operational view to, like, one of the things that he talked to about, which I would never, was about, he doesn't like the drive-in, drive-out the back. Because he said, by backing those engines in to those fire stations each and every day, gives the operators a technical expertise that operating on the narrow streets of this town allows them to define, and really, and I would have never thought it that way. And the other thing he talked about is that by not having the back wall, you lose a wall of storage for equipment and stuff. But I mean, he just brought a perspective that I wouldn't even have thought of, and I thank him. You know, he sat there very patiently, and he spoke.
It really is like peeling an onion back, the more you dig in it, the requirements and the expertise.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? You mentioned a future town meeting, would it perhaps be January? I have a couple items that I'd like to run for a January town meeting.
Thank you, Michael, raise that. It's our hope and intention to be able to go to a January, February, not an October, town meeting, to not just provide an update, but hopefully to request some funds to do a real building design. Perhaps headquarters only, perhaps more, but we are, you know, we're marching hard to that goal.
Okay, then we should coordinate, because I have a couple of items to put on for a January, February town meeting.
So the only caveat, in my mind, knowing this and understanding this, the only caveat I have in my mind is, if this donation, if this were to come, that we decide that we approve a brand-new building to be built using part of this land. And if the entire donation, because this goes back to like the school, the donations in the school, wouldn't town meeting have to vote to accept that donation as well? So one of the things that I gleaned from your meeting last night is that potentially if central is first, and if all the stars align here, the initial appropriation, or the appropriation, and tell me if I go wrong here, for a new headquarters could potentially be zero. Am I wrong there? It could be, it could be zero. But even if that were the case, and it were a X dollar donation that covered A to Z, would we still have to go to town meeting to approve that as a grant or a gift? Would we still have to put that on for discussion? I know many times when we talk about articles, we hear the term grants and gifts, and I don't even know if that's in your original, it may already be in your charge of your committee, I'm not sure. But I know that in the school building, in the significant grants that came before Charlie Winchester's committee years ago, I know that went to town meeting. I know it did.
It probably would, but you also have the issue of whether that's even currently you designed for a purpose that would include using it as a fire station.
Right, right.
So there's probably a number of reasons that this whole thing would have to be.
I'm saying, I'm just saying, if all the stars aligned, if that were, and it were a zero cost, I still think it would take a town meeting vote. No?
So as the board of selectmen lays onto the fire station building committee, I think that that would be a, it'd probably be wise, Richard, if you joined us when we met with town council about that.
Okay, all right.
But I think we should keep in mind that January, February special town meeting, which we haven't even called yet.
Right.
The reason we put that idea out there was because of the planning board possibly looking at zoning for the Falcone project, so that's really what's driving that town meeting.
The zoning for which project?
The Falcone project.
Oh, the Falcone.
So whether or not January, February town meeting goes forward, really, I think is very dependent on the planning board.
So it was clear to us, we would not have made the October town meeting, and we'd love to have the opportunity to potentially get there before the annual town meeting in April, May, rather, May. But, yeah, we'll see. So yeah, if we can dovetail on that, awesome, and Michael. that, awesome. And, and Michael, you have to reach out to me anytime if you want to sit down and go over.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it, Cap.
Thank you very much.
Take care, and we'll talk to you all again soon.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item six, boards and committee appointments. I have a recommendation from Steve O'Donnell, Chairman of the Milton Historical Commission, recommends that Fran Frederick M. McFadden of fifteen Wildwood Road to be appointed to the Historical Commission for a term of three years. Could I have a motion on the second one?
Well, I have a question before we have the motion. I understand from talking to the town administrator yesterday, there are two vacancies. Did we get that confirmed?
There are two vacancies, and Ellie Ansalone, her term will expire on September 30th as well.
So, I told Michael to put this off the next meeting.
But she's not the vacancy though, right? That's a third.
No, no. But her reappointment would come as well. But yes, to answer your question, there are two vacancies current.
Okay. Well, we had two applications that were submitted to us recently. One was from Mr. McFadden, and one was from Kathy Landers Keys, and they both indicated an interest in serving in the Historical Commission. So, I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint both of them tonight.
And often, one of the ones not on there.
The board and committee appointment, there's, for some reason, all the names, or at least a lot of names appeared on the agenda, which is not standard practice and is not necessary. So, I don't know why the names are all on the public agenda, but I don't think it's prohibited. It's, it's appointment of the Historical Commission. I mean, the agenda actually even mentions Steve O'Donnell and the Historical Commission's recommendation, but that's not necessary. It should just be.
Just the recommendation.
Just board and committee appointment, Historical Commission. So, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Frederick M. McFadden of fifteen Wildwood Road and Kathy Landers Keys of thirty High Street to the Historical Commission to serve for a term of three years, if that's the correct, we don't have a draft motion, but is that correct, that it's a three-year term? So, then, through, to serve through August 31st of 2021.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I happen to know both individuals personally, and I think they'd be fantastic additions to, to the committee.
I do as well.
Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll just add that I have the opportunity to serve with Kathy Landers Keys on the, the Board of the Milton Library Foundation, and, and she was a great asset to that board as well, so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, boards and committees. This is reappointment of Stormwater Committee members, and take a motion on that. This is, everyone knew, right, there's, there's no one knowing, this is all reappointments.
No, all reappointments.
This would be appointments to expire eight thirty-one of eighteen. Oh, no, excuse me, they expired eight thirty-one of eighteen. So, these would be till eight thirty-one of nineteen?
Nineteen.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Stormwater Feed Committee members as follows. Mike Dennehy, Chase Berkeley, James Funling, Gerard Burke, Tom Hurley, through August 31st, 2019.
Second? Does someone second?
Second.
Any discussion? All good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, boards and committees, is the reappointment of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee members. I'm not a reappointment, I'm a new appointment. Should that be, you think the word reappoint is all right there?
I can say appoint or reappoint. So, I'll make a motion to appoint or reappoint the Capital Improvement Planning Committee members. Richard Wells from the Board of Selectmen, Amy Dexter, the co-chair, as co-chair and town accountant, Kevin Donahue from the School Committee, Tom Hurley, who's the co-chair, and he's with the Warrant Committee, April Lamro from the Planning Board, John Folcarelli, who's a library trustee, William Ritchie, who's the head of Consolidated Facilities, Lorraine D., who is a community at-large member, and Michael Hale, who is a community at-large member. And I believe these are one-years, one-year appointments, is that right?
Yes.
So, the motion is to re, to appoint or reappoint those members for a period of one year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine is discussion on the Master Plan Implementation Committee budget for FY19. Just as a caveat, there's urgency on some of this money, so if it, if it is okay with the members, I'm going, we're going to schedule a meeting for Monday morning at eight thirty, just to vote.
I don't think, I don't think we need to, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with the planning director right before the meeting, and it's, what's, what was voted by the Master Plan Implementation Committee, was a request for $28,000 for child's engineering, and that included $17,000 for dredge permitting and $11,000 for the ramp design and permitting, and this is all relates to the Milton Village Project. These other items that are on this sheet have not been voted by the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And they all relate to the East Milton Project, but the Master Plan Implementation Committee has not had any discussion about the East Milton Project. I understand the planning board may like to ask us to use some of these funding for that, but we have not yet met with the planning board or, or had that request officially made. So, the request is just for the $28,000.
So, given that, I get that, do we need to vote that, though?
Yes, but it's not time-sensitive.
It's not time-sensitive?
No.
Okay. So, can we add the $28,000 for the meeting on, whatever?
Nine twenty-six.
Is that okay? Is that on the time?
We're not going to vote it tonight.
We can vote it tonight?
We can vote it? You think we can vote it tonight?
No, I'm asking if we can vote it tonight.
Town council advised that we not vote it tonight, because this is part of the revised budget. It could be discussed, but not voted on.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I was talking about Monday morning, because is it time-sensitive? I thought, I thought this had to be voted by the 24th, I think, Mr. Clark. Am I, is there a ti, is this time-sensitive on the $28,000?
Not the $28,000. Twenty-eight thousand.
Come join us.
Twenty-eight thousand is for dredge permitting and ramp design down in the wharf area. It would be part of a final outcome for the, for the wharf area. It's, it's part of a next step. The, we have MAPC looking at, looking at a build-out analysis. We have beta engineering looking at a traffic study. We don't have enough of the traffic study because the, it's much larger than we thought when we got the analysis, the draft analysis for the development. So, we have to go back to the Master Plan and Implementation Committee and ask them for, they need to ask for more money from you and from the planning board.
That's news to me. I wasn't aware of that, but obviously, Mr. Clark's the one dealing with them on a day-to-day basis. So, that hasn't come up to the Master Plan Implementation Committee yet.
So, that would come to you, you would approve and then come back to us for funding?
We would ask the planning board and the Board of Selectmen.
For funding?
Yes.
But when I talked to the chair tonight, just today, she seemed concerned that part of this was time-sensitive.
It is, because we were trying to get the beta scope, not the MAPC scope. It's trying to, it's looking at the, a traffic analysis to go with the build-out analysis. It deals with traffic impacts, it deals with parking impacts, and it's increasing the budget for, we have a small amount for, for beta. We need a double the budget for beta.
Do you have a ballpark bill on what that number is?
About $15,000.
To, total?
We know that the, we know the total report is $24,000.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're going to vote?
We need to go, we did not ask the, we did not ask the Master Plan Implementation Committee at the last meeting for, for more money for the traffic, because we didn't know what it was going to be.
Okay. Are you both comfortable? You know, you, wait, I'm just trying to help both of you.
It's going, it's going to change the, it's going to change the presentation at, on the 24th. We'll have the analysis, we'll have the development analysis and what the impacts of that are. We won't have the traffic analysis for that meeting.
Unless we fund it tonight, is that what you're saying?
Unless we fund it tonight?
We'd have to fund it.
That was my, that was my understanding.
That's a lot of money.
That was the, that was the understanding that I got from the chair today, was that if we didn't fund that, who's going to change what is done on the 24th?
Yes.
That's, go ahead.
Oh, I just have a question. But, but this is the Master Plan Implementation Committee's budget.
Yes.
Yes.
And we don't have a request before us from the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Is that right, to change the budget?
The only request we have is $28,000 for child's.
This one here?
This is new information.
Right, right.
Okay, so, I just.
We're trying to get too much done too quick.
Okay.
Well, so, Bill, is the, the traffic analysis was, the understanding was that was going to be available from early on the 24th, correct?
We thought we were going to be able to get the traffic analysis done for a whole lot less. When the numbers came back and the scope of the analysis came out, they came back and redid their numbers and came back and came up with a lot more money.
Okay. So, my final question is, on the $28,000, is our next meeting sufficient for us to vote and approve that $28,000?
The $28,000, I believe it is. Is that, is that, do you agree, Bill? I, I don't know where you're at with child's, but we, we requested it, but I don't know how soon they were going to start the work.
As soon as we call them back.
Has the planning board already approved it?
No, they do it Thursday night.
Okay. If, because I sure got the feeling today that there was some urgency there.
It, it had to do with the traffic, not the child's part.
Well, let me make a suggestion, and, Bill, you'd have to follow up with Cheryl and the others. I mean, we could try to schedule a, a quick meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, if we can get three members early. At this point, we're looking at, well, Friday's even too late. We'd have to do it Monday morning.
Yes.
And if you wanted to schedule a back-to-back Master Plan Implementation Committee and Board of Selectmen meeting, you could possibly do it that way. That's one option.
I don't have convenience anyone, but if it helps in your effort here, I'll do whatever.
I will ask that question.
Do this, which is why I had my Michael ask town council today, so we could find out, A, could we do it? Because, that's why I knew you want, I did too, but he said no. And so, given that, if there is some urgency here, I'd like to get this done, and if it's a back-to-back on Monday, could we, I can, can we get three members there on Monday morning, if we do do that? Okay. You all right with that?
Yeah, we'd have to try to get the three members of the Master Plan Committee as well.
Please stay in close contact with Mr. Dennehy tomorrow on what's going on here, so we can.
Yes.
Will a vote for the payment Monday morning, will that enable the work to have already been started and to have the traffic analysis available Monday night?
I do not know that question.
Because that's the only time sensitivity. If they can't do it for Monday night, anyway, then.
I'll ask them first thing in the morning.
Then, it's not really the need.
I'll have an answer for Michael later tomorrow morning.
Sure sounded to me today, talking to Cheryl, that it's ready, that they, and that the only, and funding is the issue, is to get it presented on the 24th. I, that's just what I walked away from, which was what I.
I will.
Mentioned to you today. Okay, so, go ahead.
I was just going to say, just a suggestion, we might go ahead and post a meeting first thing tomorrow, just as a placeholder for Monday.
For eight-thirty Monday morning, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good. Okay. Thank you. Stay in touch, please, with, keep Mr. Dennehy posted.
And, Bill, you'll have to do the same thing that Mike Zulis just suggested for the Master Plan Committee. They may need to email the members tonight to see who's available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to. I'm going to go to item eight, and I'm going to invite, no, let me see here.
Number ten.
No, number ten, I'm sorry. I'm going to jump, I'd like to get, since I have Dr. Donahue here, if I can get him to. What number is he?
Six seventeen.
So, I'm going to jump to item seventeen, which is discussion. Pool with the School Committee Chair, Dr. Kevin Donahue, we're, excuse me, relative to some school space needs that the schools, if you want to, do you want to come? No? Okay, Betty, you're off the hook. Wow. Leave your colleague out there by himself.
She has my back.
Thank you so much for coming in. Oh, I'm sure of that.
Well, thank you for having me. It's, it's a pleasure to see you all at a time other than town meeting. So, and I'd like to thank you for the invitation to talk about our space needs. They are, they are critical, and they are sort of the, the driving issue on our, on our board. So, I'm happy to, to launch into our needs, but if, if you want to frame this conversation, I'll follow your lead.
So, just for the other committee members and for people watching, is, and, and Mr. Zulis has been having conversations with other members as well, that the, there is presently a surge, a good word, to use, in enrollment? I don't even know, yes, a significant surge in enrollment in the Milton Public Schools, to the point that classroom space is at the tipping point? Is that a, in a simple way to put it?
Yes, yeah.
Where there, there are several ways you could go with it, and we've, you and I have talked about some, but I'm going to leave that to talk to you, and then I'll give you just a little bit of, just some discussions that I've had with another committee, whose building committee was looking at locations in town, and I have asked them to look at it in a diverse way, with potentially, with regard to one location, if it ever got to that point, could it be used jointly between both of you? Would it be big enough? And they were very receptive of that. But with that, I'd give it to you, and you can just kind of paint the pictures to where.
Great. That'd be great. So, I'm going to, I'm going to hand these to you. These are, so, we're going to be talking numbers, enrollment numbers, and this is an enrollment analysis that we had done last fall. So, so the nutshell version of this, I have said before, but, but we're basically plus 25% enrollment from about 10 years ago. So, we are effectively running a, a fifth elementary school within, that's at the elementary level, within the confines of our four elementary schools. So, so this issue has been percolating for the last few years, and each fall, we have a statistical analysis of our projected enrollment done. So, this is the enrollment done last fall from the October one enrollment data then. And the, I think the, the key numbers here on, on this, on this sheet here with sort of the colored zigzag, if you go down to that graph in the bottom left-hand corner, and you look at the, the K to five column, you can see where we are now, which is 2152, and where we're projected to be in a few years, in academic year 23, 24, we're projected to be up to 2,400. And that is relative to 1,700 approximately in academic year 2007, 2008. So, so we have a couple parallel issues. The first is, we have sort of an immediate need to identify between four to five classroom spaces for the next academic year or two, to, to manage our, our current projected enrollment. And then the, the longer-term issue is figuring out how to configure things optimally, because we will be, at that point, we'll be effectively running between 17 and 18 strands of elementary classes. That's, you know, 18, first grades, 18, second grades, 18, et cetera, whereas the schools are built for 14. So, so those are the numbers there. And we are actively engaged in the process of looking at our current space within the current footprint of our buildings, to try and find a place to put those four classrooms. But that, that will be challenging. And if it is possible, it will probably require some, some capital funding to, to reconfigure some existing space.
Capital P and probably.
Yes. So, that, that gets us to the, the second phase of that, which is the discussion about whether or not the existing footprint of the schools is sufficient, and whether or not we need to either acquire or build additional square footage outside of the, the existing footprint, which would, which would be a, probably a, you know, more of a three-to-five-year plan. So, with that as background for everybody, I, I jump at the opportunity to talk to you tonight about some of the particulars that we have and some of the generalities. But, but really, I think the, the important, the important part of this is, is collaboration and planning, because. and planning, because as you are aware, we are not the only capital need in town. And I think it will be critical in the next few years to make sure that all of these complicated issues between ourselves and the fire department and the DPW and additional youth space, that they can, they can, there's the potential for them to all work synergistically and wonderfully, and then there's the potential for it to sort of all fall apart, so.
Just to give you a little bit of a caveat, just on, because we just had the chair of the fire station building committee in before you, when I was at their meeting last night, and, as you know, they're looking at building or replacing three facilities. Ideally, they would, you'd love them, and then, anyone can jump in here, I think ideally you'd love to be able to put them all in the exact same spot. One of the things that they have on their plate with regard to the existing headquarters is they have a potential donor that would possibly pay for the entire brand-new headquarters facility. And to do that, I think they would come, would try to come to us, and it would take a lot of work. Katie brought up a good point tonight, this is something that, and you can tell me where I go wrong, would involve discussions with the master plan implementation committee, with the planning board, am I correct? To try and, even if it were to go that way. But one of the things that I asked their committee last night was, after having several discussions with Glenn Pavlichek, is, and I think you and I have talked about this over, I think that ideally, if, in the long term, if you could have a centralized place in town for all your pre-Ks, I think that would take a lot of the pressure off. And you can tell me where I go wrong, yes, some of the... So Glenn gave me some ideas on what you might need for size, and, and I relayed that to them last night, just because I know they're going to the point of architecture, you know, design, engineering design, to try, with regard to this area, to look at the big picture here, you know, for the, we got everything, parking, COA, it, some type of recreational space, a new fire headquarters, and perhaps even a, a centralized pre-K, a new, newly-built, newly-constructed centralized pre-K. And I know I'm like going way out, but there are only so many parcels, and if you, as you articulate yourself, if you can do things collaboratively and look big picture, in the long run, you may wind out with a real big win-win for your community in the end. So that was just one that I thought of. And then the second thing, I, from Michael's conversations with your committee, I did make a couple of inquiries. I know you've looked out to some of our private partners, it's just in the, because either way, I think, am I correct, that even if you could find some space within your existing footprint, 2019's going to be a pressured year for you? The calendar 2019, 2020, am I, am I correct there on that?
That is correct, yeah. Yeah. So that, that sounds like a phenomenal opportunity. I think the idea of, the idea of moving our, pulling our pre-K out, that, that offers some, some challenges and some definite opportunities for, for people watching who are unaware, our, so our, our educational ethos in town is really an encompassing, it's a 13-year K to 12 ethos, and the pre-K program has a number of different factors that, that contribute to it. So it's, it's not particularly large, but they do take up several rooms around, around our campuses. So removing them from the building footprint would help. You would, some of those spaces, a lot of those spaces would need to be reconfigured to make them additional, you know, workable for additional elementary classrooms, but that, that could definitely be a, a positive step to, to fixing our, our issue at the elementary level.
I think it's a discussion that we need to continue having and researching. I think it just makes sense, just, because, as you and I talked about, and I think, I can't remember what it was, and I think our first discussion, we talked about, what do you think the dollar amount would be today if we had to build a, a brand-new elementary school?
So it, it's around 36 million.
Okay, so I thought 25, so I was off by 11.
Yeah.
But I've got 25, so I hit a lot the last two days of a fire station, so.
It's, the square footage construction cost for educational buildings is, is in the low 400s per square foot, 430 or so, so.
Okay, so I, so in the meantime, and I'll open this up to anyone else who has questions. As far, so for 2019, I've had two things, the newer one being trying to find some space for you, and I think whatever we can do to help you with that, we will do.
Thank you.
And the second thing is, I know you're gonna, is the kind, top of the kind of still in play for you, you still gonna put some money towards, why don't you explain that? Because I don't think you would.
Right. So, so for those, for those following along at home who, who want to see these numbers real-time, if, you can go to the Milton Public Schools website, the school committee banner presentations, it's October 2017, Nezdek presentation. So having had these, these numbers presented to us, we're, we're left with how we, how we approach that. And there are a lot of ideas about taking square footage that we have and converting it into classrooms, because we've, we've sort of run, run the gamut of, you know, taking all of our art rooms and all of our music rooms and all of the classroom-esque spaces and turning them into classrooms. So now we're left with other spaces, gymnasiums, cafeteria, and the, the top floor at Cunningham School. So we would like a professional estimate, what the cost of turning those into usable classroom space is. And we are in the process of engaging an architect to look at the space and to give us a reasonable estimate as to what those costs were. We, we have, we have sort of legacy costs, estimated costs from about 10 years or so ago when we looked at doing that. So we're in the process of, of trying to get a, a real solid number for those right now.
What do you think the timeline will be before you have that?
So I, I, they met with our facility subcommittee or advisory committee this evening. I, I got the executive summary for that, and they said probably three to four months, which would make my, my ideal, in an ideal world, we would present that at a, at a January town meeting, February town meeting. I'm not, I'm not sure we'll be, we'll be ready then, so it would be at the annual town meeting timeframe where we would be able to present that. But that's, that's the timeframe that we're looking at.
I've asked you this before, but I'm asking a hard question now. Ballpark, what do you think, would be numbers-wise?
So again, the, the...
I have a number in my head, but I might be off again.
Nope, nope, it's fine. So the, the sort of semi-solid legacy costs extrapolated out for inflation, et cetera, are in, in the order of 900,000 to 1.2 million. But, but that's, you know, that's, that's a 10-year-old number with sort of back-of-the-envelope math. So before we, you know, before we do municipal planning based on that, I think it's incumbent that we have a, a professional number.
Give me a real number.
Yeah. But it's, I would expect it to be in that.
So if this were to go, and this is just, if this were to go to town meeting in April, this would be a capital request, am I right? Am I correct? This would be a, this would be a capital project?
Presented to the capital.
This would be presented, this would be a capital request?
Yes.
And is this something you, we would bond, do you think this is something we would bond? What do you, yeah, I mean, it's way beyond operating, it's way beyond capital. I'm, I'm just thinking, oh, it's a capital, it becomes a capital request that we would add to the bonding for 2020? Am I correct there, Katie? Am I going the right way?
Every two years.
Yeah, every, all right, so every two.
I mean, you know, theoretically, it could come from free cash or some other source. We, you don't know.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Especially if it crosses two fiscal years.
Okay. Okay, so, go ahead, I'm, any questions, anyone? Go ahead, Michael.
So, so first, an observation, and that is, when, when you have excessive demand, it means that you're providing a good service. And so we have a challenge as a result of the great service that you and, and the administration are providing. And so we'll meet the, we'll meet the, the, we'll meet the supply, but, but it's, it's a result of the great service and the demand that you've created by the great service. So just so I, just so I understand it, it's four to five classrooms needed next year?
Correct.
To, to ease the burden?
Correct.
And then, and then to ease the burden, long-term, we're talking about 10 classrooms?
Yes, so, well, sort of. To ease the burden long-term, if you look at what we're built for, which is a 14-strand elementary system, moving that to a 18 to 18-strand elementary system, that's between 18 and 24 classrooms.
Okay.
Some of those classrooms, we are, are, have been legacy and have been used for several years now and are probably fairly firmly established as elementary classrooms, but a number of them are recent converts from music classrooms and art classrooms and things like that. So, so that's the, that's the additional...
You'd be looking to get them back?
Extra, yes, exactly, that, that we're looking for between what we're, what we're designed to be running at and what we, what we think we're going to end up running at in about five years or so.
Right. And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, no.
And so, and the, the, the 900,000 to 1.2 million, that was to rehab the fourth floor of Cunningham? And what, what's the estimate on what that would provide in terms of?
So again, this, this gets into why we want a professional to, to come in and talk to us, because the, not only are the, the costs sort of semi-solid, but the projected utility of renovating that space is also semi-solid. I've heard, and, you know, that, you know, that it may approach covering that need, or it, it, it may fall short, and, you know.
Is there any other of the existing footprint of buildings that you'd be looking at adding anything to, or just there?
Right, so in terms of, in terms of adding to the, to the, right. So the, the way we have viewed our space needs is sort of through the rubric that the town has used in terms of capital projects for the past several years, where you have an advisory or investigate, investigation period, and then they recommendation, they make a recommendation in terms of the need, and then you have a sort of a building committee process. So that being said, we are, we're open to all, all possibilities, whether it's adding on to an existing school, whether it's building a, a new elementary school, whether it's, it's, as you said, building an early education center and, and pulling part of the elementary school out of there. We, we recognize that, you know, we live in a community, and, and the, the solution has to be community-friendly from all facets, so. That's a very general question, answer to your question. Specifically, I would say, yes, we've entertained the idea of physically adding on to most of the elementary schools. The only one that it would be particularly challenging with would be Tucker, because of the footprint of the parcel. There's, there's just not a lot of usable land there.
I get that.
So.
Okay. Anybody else? Tony? So listen, I, I thank you. We get this. If you're to stay in touch and keep us posted as to...
Thank you.
How that pod progresses. In the meantime, I believe Mr. Zulis is going to continue to work with, yes or no, am I right on this, or no?
Sure, I will.
Okay. I will stay in touch with Glenn. I mean, he, he gave me some great insight yesterday. And then from our end, I think we'll just continue to look at this long-term, so, because I, it's obvious just by looking at the numbers that, I think we should be looking long-term at these things anyway, when, when we can, and...
Yeah.
And I think a centralized pre-K would be, if we could ever do it, would be a really positive thing for the community and for the school system.
It would, it would certainly present in some areas a degree of flexibility in our educational system. And I, I thank you, I thank you for the opportunity. I, I agree. I think it's, it's critical over the next, I think over the next six to eight months as, as we work through our professional recommendations coming in, and where we go from there, that, that our two boards work as closely as possible. And I look forward to that. I think routine contact between chair to chair, or subcommittee chair to subcommittee chair, or...
Call me anytime, even though we tag, we phone tag each other. I, so one final question, just on the 2019, on the, on the going outside of your existing footprint, what would you foresee, if you had to go to alternative sites, what grades would it be, or what, what, what would you ideally, have you given some thought to it, ideally, you want, for space that you want, what would you want to put where?
Right. So in terms of those four to five classrooms?
Yes.
I, I think, I think realistically, we'll take what we can get.
Okay.
And we'll make it work, is, is the answer to that. You know, I think pedagogically, we want to minimize the number of transitions, we want to, you know, minimize the sort of disruptiveness to the different schools' community feel, but, but we'll, you know, we, we just have to make it work until we find that, that long-term solution, whether it's expanding the existing footprint or adding a pre-K and reconfiguring within our current footprint or some other high resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much, it was a late night, a long day.
Thank you. Oh, no, and I appreciate you accommodating my schedule.
So, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, too, for being his wingman tonight.
Back to 10, I think.
So item 10, boards and committees. This is our motion to reappoint a member to the, reappoint a member to the commission on disability, if I can have a motion. This expires 7/31 of 18.
I'll make a motion to reappoint to the commission on disability, Joe Pondak, for a term of one year retroactively, ending now July 31, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Any further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item 11, proclamation recognition. This is from Joseph Mullen. We have a motion here for proclamation. Joseph D. Mullen, from Joseph D. Mullen, Treasury Troop 5, requesting a letter of recognition for, from our board for Reese Daniel Mullen on achieving the high rank of Eagle Scout on April 19, 2018. This letter will be presented as court of, on a court of ceremony in October. So do I have a motion to do that, to present this to him?
So I'll move that we, we sign and present a letter of recognition from this board for Reese Daniel Mullen on achieving the high rank of Eagle Scout on April 19, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. A great achievement. One I failed to make, but I've always regretted, I came so close.
Can we ask the office to just follow up with the troop leader and find out when the ceremony is? It didn't give us the date in October.
Exactly, exactly.
Normally, we usually, or some of us, or all of us try to go and present it to him.
I think I just saw it there.
It just says October.
Yeah, it does.
It just says October.
It's a good question. And that is a great honor, you're right, chief. It's a high honor, so.
It does, it just does, even, even in the letter, just it's October. So can we find that out, Joe? Thank you very much. Okay. Now, item... Wow. 840, or the town administrators report, am I right here? Number 12?
You are.
Yes? Mr. Denny, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Busy couple of weeks since we, we last met. First and foremost, I want to thank Madam Clerk and her entire staff and the volunteers that spent more than just the day after Labor Day, making sure that we, everyone had an opportunity to vote. 34% turnout in town, which I think everyone was pleasantly surprised at, given the heat and it being, having fallen, fallen on the day after Labor Day. So kudos to her staff. There's a lot of work that goes beyond the election itself from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the day, so another great work there. And I believe the November election is on the 6th, so they'll be right back at it again soon. But I just want to acknowledge that group and the group of volunteers that spend so much time at our precincts. It was seamless at, at precinct date, I know that much, so kudos to them. We have the MSAPC in here on the 26th to talk specifically about the press conference that they held last week. about the press conference that they held last week, a little more detail about what the, the federal grant that they won means. Laurie Stillman and Caroline Cancelo will be here to discuss that and, and the, the overdose program that, that was announced. Many of you were in attendance. I know DA Morris, who was there, it was very well received, also a very hot day. So, we're gonna have them in here on the twenty-sixth, but just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that's going on there.
I think we should bring the DA in too. No, that's okay.
Yeah.
We'll have to look.
Yeah. Obviously, a couple of things going on this week operationally. The Henry's Building, I think for the last time, I can thank everyone for their patience. That building is down. I believe there's about two weeks left of removal from the site before it takes on its next, next chapter, but I just want to thank the developer, the T, this board, everyone that had something to do with this along the way, and just ultimately thank the neighborhood and, and the constituency for their patience. It was, it's been a long time, but that building's down, and we're moving on to a new chapter in town, I think, which will make that Central Elliott District even more vibrant. The carts, obviously, are being delivered in town. About half of them have been delivered already. Pretty smooth operation that, that I've witnessed, having witnessed a not-so-smooth one in the city of Boston. So, great work being done by Hillary Waite, Chase Berkeley, and that whole group getting those carts out to people. If you do have a concern, if you got a cart you don't want, if you haven't gotten a cart, please wait until Friday before you call our office. They're, they're still in the process of delivering them, but so far, so good. Half the carts have, have been delivered, and to date, only eighteen addresses of approximately forty-four hundred have been undelivered. Either they're vacant, or I think we've had two refusals so far, so, kudos to that group. There's gonna be a tongue twister, but I want to thank Chief Grant for his application, and they were awarded a FEMA fire assistance grant. Amy Dexter helped put the grant together, but they will be receiving a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for firefighter gear, turnout gear, in the upcoming fiscal year. So, great job by Chief Grant to get the grant. And then, just, just two more things quickly. Household hazardous waste drop-off day is Saturday at the Public Works Yard on Randolph Avenue from nine to twelve. Milton residents are welcome to bring any stuff that could be combustible, or needs to be placed in a separate stream. And just, I'm, I'm always amazed at the community that is shown in this town. I think we have a record-breaking number of block party applications this year. Every day, two or three more neighborhoods come in looking for that application, and every weekend you drive by, there's cones out. I know it was Governor's Road, my neighborhood, September twenty-second. There's just a, just the community outpouring every year, this time of year. School's back in session and people getting back to their non-summer lifetime, but just the community that is shown through these block parties is, it's impressive. So, just want to thank everyone for following through on that. I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone got a copy of that letter that came in from the AG's office today, relative to the National Grid. What's going, it was very publicized anyway, from Attorney General Healy's office on the news as well today as to where they're going with this, and I appreciate their efforts and the fact that they reached out and sent that to us. One of the first things on the, I had asked on the Falcone Working Group that Chair Charlotte Geis has been talking about, working with the planning board. Tony Farx and Melinda both volunteered, and, and I thank you both for, for us. They do have a meeting tomorrow night, but I'm not sure if they're gonna discuss this or not, as far as the planning board does, but I will get any dates. And I think that we should probably post for the twenty-fourth too, because I know, I, how many of you know they want to come to this on the twenty-fourth? And I'll just reiterate this, because you weren't here, Tony. So, on next, on the twenty-fourth, the Master Planning Implementation Committee is having the MAPC give a presentation, a public presentation, am I right, Katie? A public presentation?
Yes.
Yes, on the work that they've been doing down in the Lower Mills area.
Seven PM here?
Seven PM here, yeah. And if anyone's going, if we just, and I'll make sure, because I think I'm gonna go to that as well, if we can post that.
So, Richard, are you referring to the, to the working group then, for the Falcone?
No, 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 I just wanted to mention that, because she, I don't want this on my mind. The working group for Falcone thinks, she hasn't really picked any dates yet, but she did tell me that she's going to have some dates coming. I think I talked about this at the last meeting, where they may be discussing this, that I think it would be, would want both of them to be there, to at least here, and then-
But don't, don't we have to appoint people to the working group? That's my, that's my question.
I don't know, do we have to do that?
Not sure.
All right, what do we, so those will be, and if we do, we'll do it, we'll put that up for the next meeting, is that all right? You okay with that?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, okay. Okay. Item two, Mike's five K crush, I'll let, Deb Milbaugh, that came from initially, right? Didn't that come from Deb Milbaugh with a request that they're looking to have a town hall team, am I saying it right?
They asked the board to sponsor a team to walk in the five K.
To walk in the five K. The cost isn't minimal. Is it thirty dollars for each one of us? I'm, I do, we can do that, yeah, we can, we can raise money too. The date is, is October twentieth?
Ten AM.
Ten AM, right, in the morning?
Cunningham Park.
What do you think?
Yeah, unfortunately, I realize that that date is, is an MMA, I'm not gonna be able to go to it, I'll, I'll register for it, but it is an MMA regional meeting that day that I have to be at, which is over in Devens, but, so some, some of us may be at that, or may not be able to attend, but-
Oh, definitely.
A few of us went to it last year, and either walked, or I think David Burns ran it last year. I walked with the substance abuse folks, but they just asked if we would form a team, and we could potentially broaden it and ask anyone at town hall, or one other elected boards who might want to register. I think we just have to go online and register.
Ourselves.
The first person who does it, then everyone else can join that team online, and we can open it to a wider group.
Yeah. All right, I'll do that tomorrow. Okay?
Yeah.
I'll do that tomorrow morning.
So, we're, we're committing to running, is that?
Oh, whatever, I'm not, I'm, I'm-
Running all along, all right.
Let me ride my bike. No, I just, okay, so I'll do that in the morning. On October first, at nine AM, we're going to host coffee with Commissioner Gross, a community-wide reception here at the Council on Aging. And that'll be posted, we're gonna, Michael's invited the department heads, Chief King, he, I was with him yesterday. He's lived here for a long time, and he is well-deserving this promotion, and I think many people here know him, they don't even realize, but I think it'd be a great thing to have here for, I said this when he was promoted, and he was very excited at the thought of it when I said it to him, and he's, he's, he's been straight out. I asked for what, this week or next week, and October first or second were the first two dates I could get for our morning, so, put that on your calendars. October first here at nine o'clock. And that's pretty much it, that's it. I have the AG's letter for Falcone, again, the nine twenty-four, and that's it.
Actually, I have two things tonight. First, a belated LaShanatova to our, to those of the Jewish faith, and two, the Milton Library Foundation Gala is scheduled for October seventeenth, and so, I can, the headline speaker at the, at the gala this year is Upton Bell, who is a sports personality, and he's spent many years in pro football, and he's gonna be telling stories from his recent book, Present at the Creation, which is a book about the founding of the modern NFL, and his experience is there. So, the, the gala's gonna be held at Granite Links. It's on October seventeenth. You can go on the website, www.mflliterarygala.org. That's M F L Literary, M L F, sorry, M L F Literary, Literary Gala dot org. We're looking for sponsors, and those to take ads, and those to buy tickets. And it's, it's gonna be good food at Granite Links, it's gonna be a lot of fun, there'll be a lot of football talk, and there will be surprises, I can guarantee you. So, get your sponsorships and ads and tickets now.
You emceeing again this year? That was a real good answer.
That was a really good answer.
Melinda, anything? No? Katie?
I just want to mention, I was at the Mass Selectments Association meeting yesterday, and they're gonna be sending out an email to all the selectmen this week, that there are two regional meetings coming up, September twenty-fifth and October twentieth. September twenty-fifth is in Danvers, October twentieth, as I said, is in Devens, but there are pretty good topics on for both of those. Housing is the focus on the twenty-fifth, and the twentieth is a, close to an all-day meeting with, Lieutenant Governor will be there to speak, and social media, hiring, retaining, and working with the town manager is another topic. So, and there, there's a third topic that's still in process. So, there's some, there's some interesting regional meetings that we can avail ourselves of coming up, and everyone should be getting an email about those. But I was asked to reach out, and I have to reach out to selectmen in other communities, so, just doing that collectively here.
When are you hosting one?
Well, no, we don't have to host, we, we-
No, I said you have to. I said, when do you want to host one? You should think about it.
We don't have, I mean, they're-
We'll find a place.
They're not really, oh, you mean have Milton host it?
Yeah, yes.
We could offer, I suppose, at some point, but, yeah.
Well, you're out there if you don't have to.
Well, they're trying to, you know, they're trying to reach out to everyone across the state, so they, they pick these locations that they think makes sense. The, the one that Melinda and I went to was in Plymouth in July, and, so, yeah, I don't know if they've had any recently. I think they had one at Randolph recently, but-
Fire your flag. Fight. Okay.
I'm signed up for both of those.
Oh, that's good.
Tony, anything?
I have nothing to add, other than thank you for coordinating that coffee with a cup. It's good.
It'll be very good. Okay, so, I'm going to jump down to the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. Do we have to, do we have, we have to, um-
Future agenda items?
No, oh, yeah, no, yeah, I'm gonna go to those first. You're right, I'm gonna go to those, Mike. Citizen Speaker Response, we don't have any, so, item sixteen, future agenda minus, we need to reappoint our pilot committee members? Am I correct? The whole committee?
The whole committee, and we're still looking for a resident on that committee.
I've identified someone.
Are you staying?
Okay.
So, you gotta decide this one. You told me not to, I thought you told me not, so I hadn't written you.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, okay, so, okay, so, with that, we'll work on that for a future. The three-fiftieth committee? What's the three-five-oh committee? You need to bring them in?
Reappointment as well, there's still money left in that account.
Okay, okay. A discussion regarding town's policy on speed bumps. Do you want to have that with who?
I've received several phone calls from neighborhoods as, as a part of traffic mitigation, in their pockets of their neighborhoods. Some have suggested even paying for them themselves and putting them out seasonally. So, I think it's worthy of discussion.
Okay.
We'll probably have to have a public works representative here, maybe a public safety representative here.
I think you need both, I think you need, I think you need Chief Grant as well.
Right, yeah. I mean, in, in Boston, Jim Hooley and EMS voiced the largest concern when you're carrying patients in a, in an ambulance.
Fallon did the same, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe a Fallon representative, but, yeah, I think it's worthy of discussion. We see, and it's different, different neighborhoods, it's not one neighborhood specific, but there are certain neighborhoods that would, would ask this board and the town if they could put their own temporary ones in. So, I think it's worthy of a discussion.
Okay. So, Steve O'Donnell's also target, is targeting providing information on a mill near a building, is that we got any grants or grant money, or?
I don't know specifically what he wants to talk about, but he was wanting, if he could come in here and, and brief the board.
Okay.
And I think related to that, the Historic District Commission, we need to find out from the Historical Commission where they're at. They were going to help us with that.
Okay.
I have one other item-
So, can we add that to that? Can we add that to when we bring Steve in? You all right with that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one other, and we haven't heard from the Animal Shelter Committee in a long time, so could we bring them in at some point for a report on where they're at?
Certainly.
Mr. Clark, we can do that pretty soon, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna add, I'm gonna add that for the next meeting.
First, first week in October.
For you, for, for a report, our first week in October for?
Well, they, well, they have your first meeting in October.
All right, so we'll report it for our first meeting in October. How's that? Is that all right with you, Jennifer? Just making on that? Is that all right with you, Katie?
Ten, ten, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else? Anyone?
I have one more. Uncity House had reached out in June, and it fell through the cracks. Annually, they asked for some food drive money from the Governor Stoughton Trust, so that, that's gonna have to get on the Governor Stoughton agenda on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And I beg their forgiveness that it, it fell through the cracks. We, they reached out to us yesterday wondering if it had been heard by this board and what the decision was, and I found, I found the paperwork, and it just, it missed the agenda, so, my apologies to the Uncity House.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? We're good? Okay. So, are we gonna suspend and go into Governor, and then come back to, or can we just go right into Governor Stoughton?
What else do we have?
Executive, so I'm gonna go, we're gonna come back to executive session, do executive session.
You should recess our meeting.
Yes, that's what I mean, that's the word. So, we're gonna, at this time, we're gonna recess our regular meeting and go call together a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. Do I need a second to recess? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. Do I need to do a roll call for that? No, just for executive, okay. Okay, so, one thing we have is an approval, Verizon easement, I see Mr. Clark walking this way, so I'll ask him to join us at the table. And Verizon needs an easement to replace the existing poles and set one new pole, all necessary for development of the Pulte project that is taking place at this location now.
If I can lay the groundwork for this, this, this board approved similar utility easement for National Grid on March twelfth. And again, it's, it's to provide service to that new neighborhood being developed as a part of the Pulte project, which was formerly Town Farmland.
Okay. So, you'll see, there's a copy of a letter here from Karen Levesque, who is the right-of-way manager for Verizon.
I'll pass my coffee down to the other man in one minute. What I just gave you is, is part two to what the request is. They're looking to replace three telephone poles, three utility poles that are out there right now. They're looking to add a fourth utility pole. The issue here is presently, we have an electric line that comes up Governor Stoughton Lane, cuts through the Town Farm property, and goes out between two houses on two countryside lanes. That has two wires in it. It is one conduit that has electric wires, and there's also a fire alarm wire that connects from Canton Ave. to Countryside Lane. Whatever Source is doing is they want to cut the electric line so that it does not have to go cross-country, go through people's yachts. What it is going to do is come up Governor Stoughton, they're going to replace the three thirty-five-foot telephone poles there, put in three forty-five-foot telephone poles. The existing telephone poles are about thirty-plus years old, thirty-five years old. Instead of being like this, they're going to be a beefier pole. It's also going to hold a bit heavier wire. The paper that I gave you here is the new electric coming up Governor Stoughton, going into the Milton Woods project, and it also shows that EverSource is taking and redoing the lines out on Whittier and Countryside, and they're making all of those connect off of Whittier, not off of Governor Stoughton, not having to go through people's yachts, putting it into the existing right-of-way onto the public roads. They've already started, they've already gone up Whittier, they've already taken the turn and gone down Countryside, and I believe you may have given permission to do that several weeks ago. This is the other part of that, for as much as this is EverSource, Verizon owns the telephone poles.
Right, I understand that.
So Verizon is asking for the easement for its telephone poles, and it's, has to do more with the electric line than it does with Verizon needing the pole. The wires are on a Verizon pole. All of the wires inside Milton Woods will be underground, that's electric, electric telephone, telephone and cable. It also has a fire alarm in it. The, there is an extra conduit beside the electric conduit that will hold the town's fire alarm wire. That fire alarm wire is being brought down to Uncity Road. It goes all the way up Woodlot Drive. up Woodlot Drive. It does continue out to Countryside, but that's the only piece out there. One conduit with the town's fire cable in it. They need four poles.
So I have one question, because I know I'm gonna preempt my colleague, Ms. Conlon. Are we taking care of any poles on our four acres, or I just wanna?
All four of these poles will be on our four acres.
All right.
Three of the four exist already, but they are old poles that would have had to have been replaced shortly. The way with the new wires are up there, the old poles are not -- they're not actually strong enough to hold the wires that are up there.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody else? Go ahead.
So I'm not sure how this plays in, if it does. But at some point in the not-too-distant future, the Board of Selectmen may be asking Verizon for pole attachments with respect to municipal fiber, if we get to that point. So I'm not sure if our granting Verizon an easement for diminishment's cost is something that we should consider in connection with asking them for the possibility of pole attachments with respect to municipal fiber. I haven't really, you know, teased out that completely and whether it relates, but it seems to me that if Verizon is asking for it, and that's not clear to me that Verizon is asking for it, it seems to me may be EverSource. But if Verizon is asking for this, and we may be asking Verizon for something--
This is Verizon.
Yeah, so in the not-too-distant future, we may be asking Verizon for something. And so, I'm sorry, that's a little distracting. So I guess, so in order to figure out if this is something that we should consider, is there any time sensitivity to this? In other words, I'm thinking whether we should ask the Municipal Broadband Committee if this is something we should think about in that context.
My only question, what would such a small thing do to help us? Only because it's new, because we're going?
My only thought is, they are now asking us for an easement. We, at some point, may be asking them for pole attachments.
I get you.
And I, you know, I would hesitate.
Could look for a call here.
Well, you know, I hate to get charged in the future if there's a possibility that we could use this here.
Sure. Let's ask.
Good idea. I mean, I'd -- there, every time you look at one of these easements, it's for a dollar.
Right.
But at the same time, you're right. We want to attach something out here that is going to be for our purposes. It's our property. All we can do is ask.
Yeah, and if there's no time sensitivity, I think it may be worth just raising with the Municipal Broadband Committee, and maybe they can tell us it's -- maybe it doesn't relate at all, or maybe it does.
Well, is it time-sensitive?
We just got it on August 23rd, so I don't think it's -- it's not overly time-sensitive.
I'd say it's time-sensitive in that they're not gonna do this in January, February, or March.
Well, that's true.
If they can help it. They're not gonna place poles once we get into a frost.
And they do have them all marked out there.
Yeah.
The paint is on the ground there. I know there's some changes in the plans. I was talking to Pulte's engineer today, trying to figure out, because the plans say there's a pole in a certain area, and the marked out on the ground, it's in a different location. I can see why it's marked out. It's because EverSource came in and said, no, that pole doesn't go there. It goes to a different point. EverSource and Verizon have it right. I think it was Pulte that had it wrong.
Okay.
In that relates to my questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm quite sure that we could get feedback from Municipal Broadband before the 26th.
Do you want to do that?
If, you know, I think it's probably worth that kind of due diligence, if we have the time and it doesn't compromise too much to wait two weeks.
What, and not approve this tonight? So I knew you said, hold off on the approval.
Yes, exactly. If, yeah.
I think the other issue here is, we're looking to do something with our four acres, potentially sooner or later.
Right. That's kinda what I was --
So the question I have is, is this proposal going to interfere in any way with our -- now, you said three of them are going to be replacing existing poles, but there's a fourth pole that's new. And I'd like to know whether this is gonna have any impact on our ability to use our four acres for whatever we may choose to use it for.
No. And realistically, we need the electric that's up there. The new poles allow for more wire to be hung on it, whether it's our cable, whether it's cable for somebody who comes in here afterwards. You need those poles there.
And has Town Council looked at this draft of easement? Has this been reviewed by anybody in John's office?
It's boilerplate. It's the same one that we get all the time.
Well, I, okay, for the record, I'd like Town Council to review this. And, you know, there's language in here that gives the grantees the right to cut, trim, and remove trees, bushes, and growth as they deem necessary. I understand why they may need to trim some trees for the sake of the lines, but we've had issues in the town where the utility companies coming out and destroying trees while they cut a huge V into a tree to make the lines there. I'd like to see if Town Council can revise that a little bit, make sure it's done in a way that's acceptable to us or notice to us that we have some say. We've lost a lot of trees up there, and we have a lot of historic trees. So it may be boilerplate, but I don't like that language, the way it's written right now.
Okay.
So I'd like Town Council to review this, and I think we need to be positive that it's not gonna impact our ability to do anything with the four acres.
The good thing is, there are no -- there are no trees that are going to be impacted by these four poles.
Well, then let's delete that language.
I know the trees you're talking about. I know the issue that you're talking about. They butchered the tree in front of my house to do the same. I get it. And I know that they're trying to keep the trees from hitting the wires. The location of these four poles, one of the poles has a tree near it, but it's not -- it's a different kind of tree. It's a lower tree. It's not a higher tree. It's the trees that grow too tall that get chopped and trimmed. These ones won't.
And I am, I think I'm correct in that, just to follow to Katie's point, that depending on what we do with it, the worst-case scenario, it may, it could involve moving the new poles slightly. But you're not gonna be able to change your -- I don't see us doing anything that's gonna completely change our goal bringing in for utilities on a street. We've never done that on any street. I just don't, but I get that. I'm like, and I think that's where you're going as well.
That was my main question, too.
Okay, so--
The way the poles are laid out, no matter what we did up there, if there's more wire, you could have taken and moved one of those poles to this side, shortening wires, not elongating wires. It's harder to elongate than shorten. You're already taking it to the other side, so they've kinda thought this through a little bit.
Great.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any else? Okay, so then I have, so a little mindest motion. Do we want to make, do we want to hold off then? So let's hold off till the 24th if we can. You all right with that?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I'm gonna take, we'll take this under advisement and come back to it on the 24th. Okay?
26th, yeah.
26th, I'm sorry. Okay, and then?
Town Council advised that we defer--
Item three.
Item three as well, for the clarification of the way it was written.
The way the letter's written.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move that to the same date as well.
Correct.
Okay. Got a moment, Tony?
Mm-hmm.
Let me just go back to my -- okay, so do I have a motion adjourned then for the Governor Stoughton?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting and the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund.
So moved. Thank you. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Okay, so at this time, we're going to, I'm gonna make a motion to exec -- have we done everything? Are we all, anyone have any other questions, anything before we go into executive session? Hearing none. I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel, the town administrator, believing that having such discussions in open session may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and to return to open session to adjourn. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, yes? Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrick?
Yes.
We are in executive session. Thank you all very much.